We're gonna call the meeting to order. Can we rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you have a moment of silence, please? Roll call for?
Council President Chamberlain?
Here.
Counselor Greggs?
Here.
Counselor Heising?
Here.
Counselor Schneider?
Here.
Counselor Stickley?
Here.
Counselor Steerds?
Here.
We have six members present, we have one.
Okay. Counsel has had time to look over the prior meeting's minutes.
I would make a motion to accept the minutes as proven, Mayor.
I'll second it.
Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes was moved by Counsel Stickley and seconded by Counsel Greggs. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alright. Ready? How come we're not even going out to the center?
Photo moments. Get your cameras ready.
Turn and face me that way that you can be seen. Alright. Our newest council member is getting ready to just form in. Raise your right hand. I, Sarah Heising... No, you say it again. I?
I, Sarah Heising.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio?
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Waseon.
And the Charter of the City of Waseon.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Honestly?
Honestly.
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member?
Of the office of council member?
For the City of Waseon?
For the City of Waseon.
State of Ohio?
State of Ohio.
During my continuance in said office?
During my continuance in said office.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Sarah. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Make sure. Sarah, on the behalf of the city, thank you for stepping up and filling this seat. Really appreciate that. And for council for suggesting that we ask you and you helped us out. So, thank you very much for that. We appreciate it. We now are a council of six again.
I know.
It's nice. Don't have to worry about emergencies.
I know, I'm right.
Alrighty. So, moving on. Let's see. We have a couple of committee reports here. So, Patrick, we'll start with Park Board.
Alright. So, Tuesday, July 13th, we met at Rotary. It was Russ Pauley, Larry Zimmerman, David Carroll, John Arps, Keith Torbit, myself, and Trudy were there. And we had two items that were discussed. The first matter was the soccer goals at Homecoming Park. Tim Dennis had spoken with Keith and asked about the soccer goals being put back up at Homecoming Park. And he said that he would actually purchase the nets for them. So, we talked about it. The old goals are still there. They've just been not put back in the ground since I'm not really sure when. I don't think we figured that out. It didn't really matter, but... So, we decided to... Or we made a motion to accept putting the goals back up and letting Tim Dennis buy the nets for us. So, we thought it was a good idea. And I... So, I think we're gonna need a motion to approve that here. I don't know if we wanna do that. As one? Probably, yeah.
Separate them?
Separate, yep.
Go ahead and finish your report.
Yeah.
Okay. So, then, the second matter that was brought up was the memorial bench at Homecoming Park. Jeff Steerds' family had requested to place a memorial bench at Homecoming Park for Jeff. And so, we kinda discussed that. And in the past, we don't have presently any program set up. All the other times that this has been requested, it's been turned down. So, the initial thing that we talked about was that if the family wanted to do something immediately and felt the need to do it, they could go with our tree program. But the other thing that was suggested was that maybe we look into a memorial bench program. So, the group and Keith is going to look into a program. And then, at that point, we will approve, disapprove if needed. But... So, a motion was made just to look into a new program.
Are you guys going to send this to Buildings and Ground and have somebody discuss it with Keith? And maybe John, or maybe somebody from the Park Board? That it's kind of a joint discussion?
Keith was gonna put together or start to put a program together based on just the workers having to, you know, work around the stuff. So, he's going to look at like a foundation and then some sort of, you know, a bench that's the same. And then, we were actually gonna bring it back to the Park Board. Since John was already there, you know, he's representing the actual workers.
Just so it comes from some board or committee. That's perfect. Yeah.
Yeah, so we're gonna just take it back through the park.
I think that was the only issue, was making sure that they were the same way back when it was requested before. So that we didn't have different varieties and stuff. So, that's a great idea.
Yep.
Okay, good. So, we have two recommendations coming out of the Park Board. So, we wanna...
I'd make a motion to approve the recommendation for Public Works to install soccer goals at Homecoming Park with Tim Dennis agreeing to purchase the nets.
I'll second that.
Council President Chamberlain moves with Counselor Schneider seconding. Is there any discussion? Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Greggs?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Steerds?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
We have a second motion. Just more or less to go ahead and consider developing a memorial bench program with the city park.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Counselor Schneider moved with Counselor Stickley seconding. Is there any discussion? Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Greggs?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Steerds?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Okay, great. And that's it? I guess we only had the Park Board. Oh, we had one this afternoon at four, but that I'm not sure. Okay. So, Kim, did you have anything that you needed to record?
I do have one thing. If you look at new business on number B, there's a motion to authorize the matter to enter into a fishing agreement, DNR. Just like every other time, Thursday morning, 8:05, I pull up an email that this had been sent to, I believe, Dennis back in March, and the mayor. And I no longer have access to Dennis' email. We found out that this agreement has expired. Basically, this agreement covers ODNR to restock the reservoirs as well as take enforcement action on the reservoirs. So, that's why I've asked for it to be placed as... We just need a motion for her to authorize it so we can enter into the agreement for another 25 years.
And you can read about all the types of fish that are inside the reservoirs.
It's interesting to see those. All the different fish that they put in the reservoir.
Okay. Any questions on that with Kate? Alright. Tom, you have anything that you would like to...
I guess two things briefly. First, the Hoznaki property confirmation should be moving quickly. I'm hoping to have a date yet this week, actually. There was a... There was an impetus to try to get the thing done quickly because if the taxes weren't paid by the 20th, there would have been substantial additional penalties. And so, working with the Sheriff's Office and the Treasury's Office, I think we were able to expedite that. I understand the taxes were paid today. So, we should be in the clear. And I think that also means that eventually some of that money will be coming back to the city as reimbursement for the renovation work and other costs of keeping up the property. But I'll leave that to Jamie. But in any event, that's moving along a lot faster than I thought. So, we should have a date later this week or early next week, I think. You guys, the city's the owner then. And you're free to do whatever you're gonna do with it. Works it out, it's up to you guys.
We don't want it anymore. We just wanted to see that.
Somebody wants that one to build into ground.
The other thing is just to comment on that new business under letter A, I think. This... I'm just asking for a motion to authorize me to sign the ballot to approve the Chapter 11 confirmation plan for this class action with Pharma Purdue. I don't know if you're familiar with the action, but there was a... Pharma Purdue was a major producer of OxyContin and the other opiates. And they, along with some other defendants, got sued in a class action. And then, for years, there were public entities and private entities that had come together in groups and were fighting to determine who was gonna get how much of the proceeds. And finally, I guess they've come to some agreement. And now, they just need to confirm the Chapter 11 plan. I think the entity's gonna disappear for all intents and purposes, but there's gonna be a pot full of money that's gonna get distributed to private, like folks who are injured by the opioid overdoses, whatever. And then, also, some of the public entities will receive funds for use of education and drug enforcement, that sort of thing. I think, if you're familiar with how class actions work, at the end of the day, the city might have a... Get a couple bucks out of the whole millions and millions of dollars. But maybe it'll be a little bit more than that. But it'll be a while. But in any event, the next step... We filed on behalf of the city a proof of claim. So, we're in the class. And they just asked for confirmation of the Chapter 11 plan. And my recommendation is to accept that. Brooke asked me if I wanted to give you anything in writing. And I figured I wouldn't give you the 15-page pamphlet on class action lawsuit and just kinda explain that to you. But if anybody wants to see that, I'm happy to provide that to you. So, I wanted authorization to sign that ballot on behalf of the council.
That's a much better explanation than what I offered Thursday morning.
Oh. It's a class action involving a big drug company. You might get some money.
Alright, there we go.
That's it.
Might get a little money. Okay, great. Any questions at all on that?
No.
Alrighty. Okay. So, let's move on to our legislations then. Go down to third reading. And I think that's why Matt is here, is to see if this moves forward. So, we're gonna do third reading of legislation. Resolution 2021-9 is a resolution accepting the recommendation of the revolving loan fund committee authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Pam Seiler and declaring this an emergency.
I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion to place Resolution 2021-9 on emergency reading was by Counsel Stickley and seconded by Counsel Steerds. Is there any discussion? Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Steerds?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Greggs?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
I'm gonna refrain on that one.
Alright. Five yeas, one nays. One nay, motion carries.
Refrain. One refrain.
Yeah. abstain.
I just want to know about it. There you go. That's the word, abstain. Thank you.
Final? Second? Give it to Patrick. Patrick, did you say second?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Who moved?
Steve.
Motion to place Resolution 2021-9 on final reading was moved by Counsel Schneider and seconded by Counsel Greggs. Any discussion? Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Greggs?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Abstain.
And Counsel Steerds?
Yes.
Five yeas, one abstain. Motion carries.
Okay, great. And we did it.
Just for a point. It should be 2021-9, right?
Yes.
On the printout, it says 2019. Okay, I'm just...
Sorry.
Just to make sure we're legally...
Oh.
Things right.
Well, I read it as that, so thank you for correction on that.
It's still 2021-9?
Yes, still 2021-9. Just a moment.
Okay.
It's good on the first page.
It's good on the first page.
Oh, the second page. Okay, I'm like...
Yeah.
Alright, got it. Alright, thank you. Alright. New business. First motion is to authorize Law Director Tom McWaters to sign the electronic ballot to approve on behalf of the city the Fifth Amendment Joint Chapter 11 Plan of Reorganization of Purdue Pharma LP and its affiliate debtors in response to or reply to?
In writing.
In... Thank you. Purdue Pharma LP, the United States Bankruptcy Court, Southern District of New York, case number 19-23649.
I would make that motion. Second?
Counselor Stickley moved with Counsel President Chamberlain seconding. Is there any discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Greggs?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
And Counsel Steerds?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion to authorize the mayor to... We need a motion to authorize the mayor into a fishing agreement with ODNR in Waseon Reservoirs Number 1 and Number 2 for 25 years. This would expire April 20th, 2046. No wonder. We've got a lot of changes since.
I'll make that motion.
Last one.
Second?
Counsel Greggs moved with Counsel Stickley seconding. Is there any discussion? Counsel Greggs?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
And Counsel Steerds?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Can you make a note on that? Because we're gonna have to quote on that again in 2071.
I'll send you a reminder.
I'll be 98.
The only other thing I have on the new business is I want to commend Tom for the swim meet that went on down at the pool this weekend. I was amazed at how many people you can actually put inside that and around the pool and the parking, actually, all the way in front of the football field and down. So, it looked very well organized. It didn't look like there were any issues down there. And I was really excited to see that the swim meet was back. This was the one we were supposed to host last year, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, he did a very good job. It was very crowded at Waseon with that. And the Fairgrounds was holding the motorcycles. And Oak Shade was hosting one of their big races. And there had to be at least 2,000 to 3,000 people out there. And I had just like, wow. Waseon Restaurants did well this weekend and everything else because there was a lot going on. So, kudos to Tom for that.
Thank you all. I have something to add.
Yes.
About three weeks ago, I was down at the pool and I talked to Tom, just how things were going. And I said, "If you need anything or have any questions or problems, just contact me." Well, yesterday, I went by the pool. He happened to be walking in the front. And he flagged me down and talked. He says, "Remember when you said that?" He said, "We got a problem developing." He said, "Several of the lifeguards have talked about leaving to go to Napoleon next year. Higher pay. The girls over there can wear two-piece bathing suits." He said, "I'm not talking about skimpy bikinis, just two-piece bathing suits." He says, "As of right now, he's very fearful that we'll be understaffed next year." So, I wanna discuss... I might even bring a proposal up to increase the pay for all those people, like $2 an hour to get them up pretty comfortable to Napoleon. Now, that may sound like a lot. But Jamie said last year, there were like 6,100, 6,200 hours of pool payment. So, it would amount to like 12,000, 13,000 a year. And we were willing to spend a lot more to get the Hoznaki property to put in parking lot. What good's it gonna do us if we can't open the pool? That's, you know, that's my concern. Plus, another feeling people have about lifeguards is they're out there getting suntans. Two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, I mentioned they had 15 saves. I called him today. They're up to 20 saves. So, those people are doing something. And then, he called back and said that the council or the city is paying for the recertification. He said, "But nobody is paying for the initial certification that they have to have, which is $190." So, he said, "The lifeguards have to work 20-plus hours to make that up." Now, he's not asking for that. But I told him, I said, "I was gonna recommend a pay raise." And I said, "I would like to even see it go retroactive to July 1st." He said, "Boy, if you guys do that..." He said, "That would go a long ways in keeping the people here." Because he said, "That would show them that you're really interested in being comparable." And then, he also said that he checked at Walmart. And he said, "People out there starting pay at, you know, $13, $14, $15 an hour, and you don't need any certification to go there and work." So, he said, "I'm just... I'm afraid I'm gonna be losing all kinds of people." So, I'd like to see us add two bucks. He said, "His pay is low too compared to everybody." I'd like to see us add two bucks to the hourly wage and make it retroactive July 1st to keep the pool updated.
I understand your compassion on this. As far as money and discussing and making a proposal tonight, I don't see how we can do that, especially when we're not even bringing it forward from the financial of how much it is. And I don't know... I mean, Tom, talking to you, has he ever brought any of this forward?
No one has walked into my office and asked for a raise. Hurry. Well, discussed with me about this. And I don't like being brought to me here on it.
He told me yesterday afternoon about 5:30, 6 o'clock. That's when he told me. And I called today to see about the... How many saves they had, if that number had increased. He told me it had. I said, "I'd see what I could do." Then, I got a text message from him later saying about the $190 that the people have to pay.
Again, I understand your compassion and being brought into council. Tom is more or less a contracted personnel that has to follow, you know, being in charge of the same protocol that everyone else does that works for the city. If there was an issue, I wish you would've brought it forward to Keith, who is... We make that decision. And Keith makes that decision for his wage and things like that. I did ask, when you brought that forward before, I did go and ask Keith to find out if we were losing any this year because of Napoleon's pool. Find out if we had any. And there was a no on that. And that never heard any other response. But again, I guess my question is, Steve, are you going to Tom and asking him his opinion? Or did he come to you?
I asked him about three weeks ago. I was down there talking about how the pool was running. And I just said, "Well, if you have any issues or you need anything, or you just, you know, I'm open to you calling me or talking to me."
Okay.
Well, then, I drove by yesterday. Like I said, it was late afternoon. And I wanted to see the crowd and everything. He was walking across the front of the pool. And I said, "Hey, you had a busy weekend." He goes, "Yeah." And he says, "Hey, wait a minute." You know, when we talked... He said, "I do have an issue that's come up." And he said, "A lot of my people are talking about going to Napoleon next year." He said, "Two issues, the money. And second, the girls wanna be able to wear a two-piece bathing suit." He said, "We're not talking about the skimpy things." He said, "You can buy a decent two-piece bathing suit." But he said, "I'm afraid if we don't do something, he said, "We're gonna be short."
I wished he would've at least gone to Keith about this first and discussed his concerns to him because he is the one that makes the decisions on wages and stuff for that, for the lifeguards. And then, he could bring it forward. So, this is all bound on us?
Well...
That you guys discussed it and that he's saying about the two-pieces and all this stuff. And the fact that we can bring in the finances on... And comparables. Because I know other pools, they may pay for the certificate. because I know other pools, they may pay for the certificate. Are they paying for them to get recertified? And are they paying for their, their suits? And, you know, there's a lot of, of different agendas that we should bring forward. So I would not, uh, I would not want to bring forward a proposal tonight until it's at least discussed with Tom and Keith together and hear the concerns that way. I, uh, council has every right to hear, but, um, employees really should go through their supervisor's first before they...
Well, and I don't know.
Out into the open.
You know, seeing, I saw him Sunday afternoon. I don't know if he just got the majority of the feedback this weekend.
Could be.
You know, and only had today to possibly...
And I hear what you're saying, but we get the same thing in every department where your pool, they're gonna go to Perrysburg because they pay more. You get the same thing in the fire. You know, hey, they're gonna get five bucks more and, but we pay for training, but they do this. Well, they, they're gonna reimburse it. They do this, you know. We hear this in all the departments. So I...
Well, we just heard that from the department head. You, you did the same thing, Kathy.
What are you saying?
Comparing.
Yes. I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm saying that this isn't the only department that is afraid of losing employees because someone else is gonna pay them more. I'm not saying that, no. I agree with that, um, a hundred percent. I'm just saying that when you hear it in a council meeting before it's even brought to a department head, um, that he's got issues, I, I think that needs to be brought to him first, and then we can re-trust it in that manner. So then you brought it, so now it will be addressed.
Well, the other concern is, like, you know, you say we could lose police and fire. Yes. That doesn't mean we're gonna shut the police and fire department down.
Well, and that doesn't mean we're gonna shut the pool down.
Well, if, if you don't have enough people to run the pool, what are you gonna do? Shorten the hours?
That's why we need to talk to Tom.
Well, because we've invested the money in Hoznaki with the idea of running, increase the parking lot. If we don't have a pool...
That was council's decision to do so.
Yes, I know.
Knowing that this was coming forward. So I do feel it needs to be discussed with, um, Keith, at least being on board with what's being said down there in this department.
Was he gonna go to a committee or...
No, he needs to talk to Keith first. And if Steve wants to be there, I'm sure Keith would love to have him there and have that discussion.
So the next meeting, then, we can do something. Have to, if they've discussed it between...
Uh, let's, let's at least have a discussion.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If they have at least a session in between time, we can bring that up.
Why don't you and Keith and, and Tom get together with Jamie, with the money person, and what's going out, what's coming in, and the pool, the budget, and everything else.
Well, the money issue, I, I think we, I think we know what we can afford based upon what we were willing to, to offer during the Hoznaki property. So it's...
I don't know if we do know, Shane. I mean, we don't know how many employees we have down there. We don't know what the budget.
No, the number of hours worth.
At the end of this year is...
Number of hours worth.
Sixty-one hundred times that by two bucks an hour.
Yeah.
You know what Shane?
Yeah, you're talking about an increase, but we, I would like to at least see what the end of the year budget is for the pool before we go and make an increase on this now, when at the end of the year, we, you know, I'd like to see what the budget's gonna be on the pool.
Yeah, we all know the, the pool traditionally doesn't make money. We're just, we're just trying to help in retention of employees. That's what we're trying to do.
I get it. I get that. Same like budget and every other department.
There's no reason why you can't expect this same kind of ask from this particular work group when it comes from every other work group.
I'm not asking, I'm not saying that.
I don't, but...
I'm saying...
But let's not be, let's not be shocked.
I'm saying an employee who has an issue with his department should take it to his supervisor before we hear about it from council, wanting to make a motion on something that he isn't even aware of. And neither is our finance. So I'm just asking for that.
Yeah, we have every right to act legislatively and, and entertain the idea.
After, after he follows the protocol that every other employee in the city of Wasean has to follow. Yes, I agree.
So you're saying legislatively, we, we wouldn't be able to entertain a motion?
No, never said that.
Oh, okay, so...
What I am saying is I would at least like Tom to go through his boss and say, we have some issues that I'm concerned about. So he is on board of what's going on, and so is our finance on what's going on, so that it can come forward. And if, and if Steve wants to be in there, what is done is he's gone to council, said, move it, before he's even had a chance to even know there was an issue. That's all I'm saying. We really should.
Well, I just told myself up to him that if he had a problem, I'd be afraid to call me or talk to me, whatever.
And I agree with that.
I ran past him, and Keith said, well, I, I do have an issue now. And so I said, I'll take it to the meeting tomorrow night and see what I can do.
Yeah, I felt it should have gone to Keith.
Well, that may be, but the problem is if, if we don't pay him more, we're gonna be hurting next year. And we authorized so much money for the Hoznaki property that money is not the issue.
And that's a good thing to know. And I'm not saying that those kids don't deserve a raise, but just remember, they are also working for the city of Wasean. So if they're not gonna work next year, so we're gonna give them a raise. Just remember, we have other departments that are gonna hear this, not the one that just went through negotiations, but we got one coming through. So I'm just saying, we need to discuss it in the format that every other employee has to go through to say, we aren't making enough. Um, and, and they're nervous about, I mean, we're losing employees because we're not making enough, all of that. And yes, I did bring it forward, and that's why I bring it forward after it's brought to me. This just was a side door in to a council meeting, and let's make a motion on something we weren't even made aware of. The only question I asked when you brought it forward is, are we losing employees this year to Napoleon because they're making more money? And he said, no. Keith, is there anything else you wanna say?
No, I just think you have to look at the broad picture of this. This is just one group. We have other part-time people working for the city other than just the pool. We have full-time people that are working close to what you're asking to give part-time people for.
Your EMTs.
So this is a ripple effect that is not necessarily, and you also have to look at the fringe benefits on top of this. Yes, is it twelve thousand dollars? Probably on the one end, but it could be closer to twenty when you start adding in the fringe benefits and other things that go along with this. And then as you push that up, are you gonna push the rest of the wages up two dollars?
But there are certain positions that can be filled by non-certified people.
Yes, sir.
The, the lifeguards have to have special certification.
And there are only so many cert, there, Steve, there are only so many positions in Napoleon Pool that need lifeguards. They've got a full complement right now. We're not gonna lose everyone to Napoleon.
And in that fact, I mean, we have part-time, uh, police officers that have to be certified and go to...
If I could look in my crystal ball and say that we're gonna lose seventy-five percent of our people next year, be a different story, but I can't say that. We don't know what the economics is gonna look like next year. We don't know if we're gonna have a full staff.
And I think one thing that I found out this year is the city did give those who came back from last year a raise. They got an increase in their wages, and those that were doing more in the pool even got a bigger raise that had been there for two years or whatever. We did recognize those employees who did come back. So that is something I don't know if council was aware of, but, um, we did give them increases. And those who got specialty employees as far as doing more work, um, that is, is, uh, needed more training, they got even a bigger raise. Cause we went through that whole list before the pool even opened and, um, agreed to those raises, and that also included Tom and his assistant as well. And some of the lifeguards as well.
Are they under a contract this year, Mayor, or not?
The, the, not the lifeguards. They're, they're part-time. Tom is under...
Tom's under a contract, but the lifeguards are not really under a contract or anything?
Yeah, they're just, they're part-time employees.
I just wanted to know. Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion before we...
I got a new business, if, if you don't mind.
Okay, go ahead.
The only question, homecoming.
Yes.
Saturday morning, eleven o'clock. So can we go down, we go down and pick up a truck on Saturday morning?
We'll have it.
From John?
Who's driving?
I'm driving. He's picking it up.
You're picking it up?
I guess.
We'll make arrangements to get you a truck, make sure it's clean.
And I think before this homecoming committee always had a, you remember this in line? Uh, I gotta see them and...
Um, actually, Brooke, you have that, do you not?
Not yet. They will get back to me.
But you're gonna get, get it beforehand?
You guys are registered, but they don't have an actual...
They're still working on the lineup.
They're still working on it, but you're gonna have it?
Mm-hmm.
Super.
So she'll just email all of you?
We should know Thursday night, Friday morning, the approximate location where you need to line up.
Probably, and the reason is, is because you get last-minute people who come in, so they try to make the lineup as latest possible.
I, I'm just trying to prepare myself for Saturday morning, getting the truck and knowing where I'm going.
Or usually one of the first ones.
You are, yeah.
And then, then I have some old business.
Okay.
Um, the question, the signs for Rotary Park Pond Fishing Catch release. Do we have those? Are we working on those yet, or where are we having those?
Have you, they are up.
Highly up.
They are up. We got brand-new acrylic signs. Had them custom-made. Got them at a cheaper price than the metal signs.
He does his fishing at night.
After hours.
Why didn't you greet me before you...
So here was what I was gonna tell you, is that the meeting that you were supposed to run and missed, we get the luck out of outside the window.
We pointed it out at Park Board.
Did it Monday morning?
We pointed them, we pointed them.
Pointed them out at Park Board.
It was too early. They didn't have the...
I wasn't there. I wasn't there. I was not there. Thank you.
All right. Any, any other old new in between? All right. Anybody else? Okay, I guess then we, um, welcome to your first meeting, and, um, we just need a motion to approve the ballots.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion to approve and pay the bills is presented was moved by Counselor Schneider and seconded by Counselor Stickley. Is there any discussion? Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Greggs?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
And Counselor Steerks?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Need a motion for adjournment, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Motion to adjourn was moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Greggs. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.